We're gonna go ahead and get this work session started. With us tonight, we have Warren Nevada from the University of Tennessee Municipal Technical Advisory Service. And we also have Mr. John Grubbs, got it right this time, not Grubbs, but Grubbs, from the San Plas UTM Task. And a couple of things to talk about is just reviewing the charter. Also looking at the pay scale, and I think Mr. Grubbs has already got his dialed in here on the computers. So we'll go ahead and start with you, Mr. Grubbs. Let me, let me, let me say that when we... Mr. Stokes, Richard Stokes, you're probably familiar with Mr. Stokes. I know that he's retired from UT now, in what, from City of Smyrna now, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, and they got a good employee there. But he did a pay scale for us, and we adopted it about three years ago now. The world has turned.
How many years since then?
About, about three years ago.
I'm gonna ask your name again.
Yeah, probably about three years ago. But we know the world has turned, and things have happened, and pay scale was not where it should be. So I thought it'd be a good idea to bring you up as you, as we look at surrounding communities, and they gave raises in double digits. So talk to us a little bit about how we should look at redoing the pay scale and the steps maybe we should take.
Sure.
If you can push that button, Mr. John Grubbs, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, now, could I say that if I ever did I wander around?
You wander around like a guy.
Yeah, you wander around.
Okay, I don't know if the mic will pick me up well or not. So again, I'm John Grubbs, I'm a human resource consultant from UTM Task. And Mayor Hayes has asked me to take a look at a couple of things related to your, your pay. So that's, that's what we're gonna be talking about today. Won't take very long. So the first thing that I was interested in finding out is what's the relationship between your pay and how long somebody's been in pay, and, you know, in a position? And whether that makes sense, and whether you need to account for additional criteria for advancing pay. One of the challenges is, and this is kind of free market, free agency market out there, sometimes you find someone with skill, and you have to insert them at a higher rate than the starting rate. Otherwise, you can't recruit, you can't access, out of the stock. So just a couple of things to look at. First of all, I want to let you know that you can find out, the city can find out, some comparable data.
Well, yes, you already named some people.
Some comparable data information by going onto our salary survey. It's, uh, there's a website there, survey dot inpass dot Tennessee dot edu. And I pulled some data for all of the available positions that lined up with the positions that you have here at Livingston. One in particular, it's hard to, hard to staff, and it's hard to retain, it's police officers. I wanted to do some comparisons of police officers in this area. But I also wanted to take a look at whether or not it made sense to go out and do another pay study. For example, Richard Stokes has done some pay studies, he's no longer with us. We don't do the class comp design, but we do provide a list of known consultants in the area that do that. Of course, you have to pay them to do that. Again, Livingston, if you go on and look at the data that we do have in our salary survey. It's not absolutely complete data, it's voluntary submissions by cities. I think we have around seventies, per so cities participating at this point. Gives you kind of a wet finger to win comparison of what other cities in your area are paying for various positions. So it's like having, any of you in real estate, okay, well, you bought or sold a house, right? All right, so you look at your market numbers, and that's, that's what that salary survey does. It's based on the starting pay and the average actual pay in a position at that point in time. So what we did, we pulled data for, for a variety of positions. But we can focus here, it's Sparta, Livingston, Goko, Carthage, Harshville, Charlestown County, a variety, you know, of cities that submitted in your area. So we thought it would make sense to, to look at those in comparison, and also look at the labor market in general in comparison. Specifically, like I said before, we focused and highlighted the example of a police officer. And we've got several instances here, you've got police officers from Sparta, Livingston, Harshville, Goko, all good, so forth. So in order to understand the relationship between pay and how long you're here, of course, there are other variables, right? Could be pay for performance, if someone does a good job, they get a pay raise. Or if you have a step plan that has a defined amount each year, you hear one year, two years, three years, you give a percentage increase defined by that step plan, which is what you have. I wanted to take a look at the relationship between current pay and time in position. So in order to do that, what I did is I ran a correlation coefficient, statistical measure, to determine within a reasonable level, you know, ninety-five percent confidence level, and determining if it's a significant measure, and if it's less than point oh five, which has less than point oh oh one, so it's a significant measure. They gave us a Pearson correlation of point eight, eight four four. And in order to find out the percent, the likelihood, the goodness of fit, you have to multiply, you square eight point eight four four, and it gives you seventy-one point two percent. So it's a seventy-one point two percent likelihood based on your current pay of employees and their current time of position, that pay probably does affect, or their time of position probably does affect their pay. So from that, I ran simple regression using all of the data points, all of the people who are paid by Livingston. If you'll notice here early, and this is how much took by eight, and this is years per service. So up to twenty years, up to this point right here, it's really tight in the cluster around that line. So that indicates to me that when people start out here, they, you know, they stay on that step plan, and they continue to stay on that step plan. The longer someone is here, the greater the likelihood that there's deviation. For example, these two data points have, are making around twenty-five dollars an hour, and they've been here twenty fifteen to twenty years. These people have been here, who are thirty, almost forty years, and are making about the same. But you get out here, and it looks like these people are making, assuming more than thirty dollars per hour, and they've been here from twenty-two to thirty-five, thirty-eight, forty-one, forty-two, forty-seven years, and they look kind of topped up. And also, from this, you get these bar charts. Bar charts show you clusters that most of the people here are relatively new, a couple of flyers that have been here for a really long time. And most people here are still early in their pay band, except for a couple that have been here, you know, a long time, and or are paid significantly. And you've got this one flyer who's dead pretty new to the organization, but paid very well comparatively to the rest of the people who are very new. Now, what that indicates to me is that there was someone who had a high skill set that was rare, hard to find, that you had to go out and, and bust your salary cap for NFL term, and go get that talent. And the current pay plan doesn't account for that need. So that's one reason I think the pace, you know, you need to do a classification compensation study, bring in a consultant that can customize your pay plan for those types of situations. Because there's no prohibition, I'll go back to this, there's no prohibition against doing it per se, but it's, it's, it's not really anticipated by your plan. It needs to be expanded and anticipated those days. And also potentially, that accounts for some other variation. I want to talk about variation now. Current pay plan, well, I'm gonna go to this next, no, I'm looking at. And you have your pay plan in front of you. For each position, there's a dollar amount up in the right-hand corner that they get as an increase per year. What I did was I, I took that as a, you know, a percentage of their, the pay. So people in some positions get a one point one eight percent, some people get a two percent, some people get a one point one nine percent pay increase, and some, some positions get a point five three, half a percent pay increase. And what that does over time, if you compare a position to a position, or a business tax clerk and patrol officer, is they, they start somewhere close to one another at the beginning, but over time, they separate. If, if they were on the same percentage of pay increase, this blue line indicates what the business tax clerk would be making. The patrol officer ends up over time topping out at thirty-eight, six oh four, the business tax clerk tops out at forty-four, five, thirty-two. So there's a significant gap on the tail end, but there's not a significant gap on the front end. So that might be a consideration. It depends on, I mean, obviously, a business tax clerk has some valuable and hard-to-find skills, but they're not as in the band and hard to retain as a police force in these days. So as I said before, a particular interest was the police patrol position, not captain, not sergeant, lieutenant, not command staff, the, the, the greater force. Police patrol, they're hard to source, they're hard to, the way I can get it, and they're hard to retain in these markets. So I wanted to compare a couple of things. You look at these, this band here, garbage truck driver, twenty-nine, one-twenty, patrol, twenty-nine, one-twenty, police dispatcher, twenty-nine, one-twenty. They all start at the same, and the garbage truck driver increases by one point two one percent each year. So that, that person, yeah, they have a C D L, and that, and that's noteworthy, that's, that's worth factoring in to pay. But there are certain required trends that patrol people have to engage in as well, and certain pension staff and anything. So they get one point two one percent, they get one point oh nine percent, business tax clerk gets one point one eight percent. And what this does over time, it creates a gap. And that gap is right here, but the market median, from where we pulled that data we talked about earlier, market median starting pay in your area, competing cities, is thirty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars. And when I say that's not an average, that's the midpoint, just like your median when you're going out and buying a house or selling a house, you want to know what the median price is. And then the market median actual pay, now, this indicates to me that maybe these, these employees haven't been in that position very long, but they start at thirty-seven, two eighty-six, and write down their average at thirty-eight, five, fifty-six in the, the target areas around your city. So that's a five thousand dollar gap between the average pay right now in Livingston. Remember, the starting pay is twenty-nine, twenty-nine, one-twenty, and there's an average pay of thirty-three, five. That average pay, of what people are making on an average of two point one seven years in position, and that's, that's an average, it's not median. That average pay is still below the market median start pay. So if you wanted to set a philosophy that you wanted to match the market, you would need a pay study, a class comp study, to determine how far behind each of these positions were, how far behind the, the city as a whole would be. And of course, there's your catch-up cost, we're talking about that a little bit. But that indicates to me that the, the pay scale, while it might have been good when it was put in place, hadn't kept up. Inflation is pretty high, and over the last five years, I'm gonna talk about the effect of inflation on, on that. But before we get to that, I also went to this source called O N A O R. It's the US Government Department of Labor salary and job description and job task databases, and what it does, and you can go on there, anybody can go on there, it's free access. And you can search for police officer, and it'll pull up here the police sheriff's patrol officer. From that, it gives you some, some data, if you put it in your, your state and your zip code, it'll tell you what north-central Tennessee non-metropolitan areas, median low and high pay is are, and then Tennessee as a whole in the United States. And that, that's just crazy, it's right there, but, you know, that includes California, New York, of high, high-dollar areas. But for, for kind of a, just to give a flag on ground purposes, let's do this. The patrol start here is just below the north-central Tennessee non-metropolitan area start, twenty-nine, one-twenty, compared to thirty-two, ten. And then the average actual is quite a bit below the median that they have. So what, what effect this has is young officers joining the force, they, they may not care as much about benefits as they did when they was in the property department, because they're trying to save money, trying to buy a house, trying to, trying to give. Officers that have been here for a while, that may not be starting out, or, or looking at the benefits, but they're also looking at the pay, is that, that officer who's been seasoned, might look down the road and say, you know what, five thousand dollars more a year, and to take on or for whatever perks they're getting, I may just get there and still work in here, or a sheriff's department. Somebody who can cross the line and be tapped in, in the border areas, I think. So this, this presents an attraction or retention challenge as well. So in order to kind of illustrate the effect over time that the consumer price index has had, if you go back to twenty eighteen, so the last five years, these numbers aren't scary right here. Twenty-one, twelve-one, they're not scary, they start to get a little scarier, it's about here, the twelfth month. And this is all items, not seasonally adjusted, and it does, this includes food, energy items. Food and energy are volatile, so it's best to take a look without food and energy when you're looking at how much over time the inflation has affected pay scales, or, you know, how much I put in my pocket versus how much I have to pay for goods and services out there to live in. So the...
I do have a question.
Yeah, talk.
Talking about inflation, what have you seen, and I know you're probably going through it, but just a, a number off the top of your head, as far as pay year to year for the last two to three years? Is it jumping two percent, four percent, eight percent, what, what have you?
It just depends. So some cities are obviously have more money than others, right? And they can respond more quickly to these, these influences, this, this pressure. Some cities, some cities are doing four and eight percent. I've seen them do, oh gosh, sixteen percent plus a bonus, a hiring bonus, retention bonus, if they've got the money to do that. Some cities, Franklin's an example, Brooklyn's an example, but you know what?
We're not Franklin.
Right, they, they, they've got extra cash on hand for those things. But some smaller cities that are competing with them, like New Orleans, or Springfield, or Richard Stokes is, they're having, they're having to pay, so they're having to divert, they're having to redirect some of their funding into that catch-up, at least in key areas. And that's where a class comp consultant would be really beneficial to be involved, is to help you identify which areas have a plan to spend money on immediate, urgent, and important needs, and have a plan for catch-up on, on needs that aren't expressing right now in salaries. But, you know, excluding, including, rather, including food and energy, is eighteen point eight percent. So the change in what it costs us pay for things over the last five years, excluding food and energy, the more volatile indexes, is still seventeen point two percent. So if you have an updated pay plan, and you have accounted for that seventeen point two percent, the people are getting maximum of your pay plan, two percent per year instead. And at one point, nine two percent, will keep up with inflation. If you look at twenty eighteen, twelfth month, you're still lagging a little behind at two percent, but then you're catching up the next year, you're staying stable the next year, but then all of a sudden, you have this, this shock again, that, that pushes everything forward, it's a tsunami. And you've got, you're either gonna have to address it now, or you're gonna have to address it later, but it's, it's, it's going to be a pain point when it comes to recruiting a higher talent as someone. So you look at these, these situations, and we've got a few recommendations. This is the high levels, low levels, and that's recommendations. Seek professional assistance in pay plan design and redesign. Again, we'll, we'll provide you with a list. We, we checked last year with several vendors that do this, to make sure they're still doing this, and they are. And we have a list of those. Several of them have worked with Tennessee cities, some of them have not, but are still credible. There are a couple that have quite a bit of experience in putting together a market-based pay plan compensation design. Usually, the pay, pay rates are ranges, sometimes in step plans. But before you do that, I would encourage you strategically to think of a few things. First of all, define what your philosophy is going to be for all positions, and maybe key positions initially. You want to determine if you're going to lead, lag, or match the market. Lead the market means you're gonna pay more than the market median. Lag, Angela, we just can't pay what the market median pays, and we're just gonna have to, you know, shop it, discount, so to speak. And match the markets, keep it up at the Joneses, making sure that you're at least getting the same pay that your competitors are, not just your competitors from other cities. Now, this is important, you need to know where your people are leaving and going to. If, if, if employees are leaving, to go to a distribution center here, or a factory here, or go to another agency in public service, you need to know those things. And a class comp consultant can help you uncover some of those things. You need to know where they're going, so that you know who your competition is, right? When you do the tit, you probably need to go out and get a door back, or your running back is going out. But then do a gap, a gap analysis with your current state, where you're at, where you want to be, and come up with a cost. I mean, there's probably gonna be some sticker shop on it, once you bundle it all together, it's like you look at the bottom dollar. But the cost of not catching up, what's that, really? Cost of catch-up is gonna be expensive, but the cost of not catching up is gonna be kicking that hand down the road, and it's, it's gonna be a danger to providing a public service that says potential.
Excuse, are we behind the cause of compensation inflation, or just inflation in general? Or were, were we behind, or are we behind, before inflation ever hit?
You were a little behind before inflation hit, because you set a maximum trend of two percent. Most someone in a position here, depending on what position or slot they can get, is two percent, based on their pay plan. Some positions are only getting point five three percent per year. And that's automatically behind, I mean, I've never experienced a year that had only, you know, five, three percent inflation. So you're setting those positions off the feller, and you're also setting it up so that you've got a, a different set of trend lines for positions. And, and that not, that's not necessarily a bad thing, if you're starting certain positions out ahead and letting the market catch up with them eventually. But if you're starting them out behind in the market, and not giving them an opportunity to float with the level of all boats, that, that can be a challenge, an attraction, or retention. So both, answered your question, I think, in some cases. But then you would need to prioritize which, which one of these, which ones of these, or multiples of these positions are to be focused on immediately, and then next, and then next, based on your market realities, your exit numbers, your applicant flow numbers, how hard it is to recruit in the pattern. And then at least every two years, annually if possible, run a sanity check of the pay plan in comparison to, you know, that year's current state of affairs, that year's current consumer price index, turnover rates, apple flow, and so forth. But inside that plan, have some documented flexibility.
Excuse me, John, do you all do that, that's, you can't do that annually?
Okay.
It'll be the same company, whoever we hire.
And usually, usually, they'll do that, it's pretty quick. If they've installed a, a system, say, you've got an Acton touch or a Windows PC, once you've spent a thousand dollars for that, your little update, it's pretty cheap. So they'll, from my experience, several consultants will do a quick two or three thousand dollar, five thousand dollar cost update to your plan over a couple of years. But make sure you negotiate that anyway, through some of those terms. But yeah, we, we can't come in and do their, a repeat of the work we didn't do since then. And like I said before, we're, we're no longer, never really were. I think Richard had a certain skill set that was, you know, targeted toward compensation design. There's a lot of statistics and regression modeling, there, there are things to tell, you know, point factor analysis that you have to do, the scope of the job, the size of the job, difficulty of the job, and all those other things that come into calculating how much that, that market value is for that job. It's like pricing peanut butter, you know, so skippy's gonna be more than break value, so you have to do that. And they can come in and kind of reset their work pretty quickly. We don't do that, because we don't have staff that's expert in those things.
I guess we was lucky to have Richard do it when he did it.
Yes, yes. I know enough about it to be dangerous, but I'm not comfortable staking people's livelihoods on my expertise. The certified compensation professional, it's actually a designation in the human resource law. It takes forty years of, of testing and studying, and about ten grand to get that certification. So that's one reason this conference office charged a little bit, is because it's almost like a college degree in and of itself to get that certification. We don't have a CCP in, in-house. But within that plan, the last point, this may be the most important one, is make sure that you have some sort of documented flexibility. When you hire our, our staff where our field directly positions, that you can compensate them appropriately in that range based on years of experience. So I'll give you an example, what we do, or what UT does, is when they hire staff, they have a pay range with a market median midpoint and a start. And depending on your years of experience, or education, or certification, you start off either closer to or right on the midpoint, where some other people with fewer years of experience, lesser education, fewer certifications, or no certification, would start either close to at the beginning of the scale. So it allows you to differentiate based on, at least to some degree, you know. And then another thing to consider is when you put together your, your vacation leave policies, you may hire somebody who has thirty years of experience and doesn't want to start one or two weeks of vacation. And I say, you know, I've, I've got four, I've got five, or a man, I'll come to work for you if you pay me what I'm making, because I don't have to drive and cook, and if you give me my vacation that I have now. So you have to make those value decisions. So that is part of your pay and benefits compensation, total compensation, total reward system, that is considered along this, along with this, if that makes sense. But I got that done in under thirty minutes, I'm doing all right. So I say, thanks for letting me come talk to you about this, and give you some factors that I've had in the game in the last little bit, moving in some of the numbers. Yes, sir.
Yeah, a couple of questions is, hey, can you share that slideshow with me? And maybe I can give it to the board members if, if they need one.
Hey, it's on that thumb drive right there, and it's your Barbie.
Oh.
So you can have it.
And I'd have a list of the folks that could do the pay comp studies.
All you have to tell is that right here.
Okay.
I'll make sure you get that.
And particularly the ones that have dealt with Tennessee cities.
I'll let you know which ones. They're Arthur Gallagher in Nashville, Berth Thompson Associates, I know they have. I've actually had them hand them personally when I was making our, two separate cities, so I know they do. I'll send you that list.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right.
Anybody have any questions for, because I mean, without, you know, anybody can speak to it, but it sounds like we definitely are from your study there that we need to do a pay comp study. That's what you recommended, correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you, lady and gentlemen.
Any questions before, John? Thank you very much, appreciate you.
I'll turn the button on.
All right. You're more than welcome to stay or you can?
No, I, I want to stay and arrest Warren.
Okay.
He talks, but I gotta give him.
Congratulations on the football game Saturday.
That's right.
What football game?
I was a trap.
I understand you don't have a GoPro now.
No, we crowdfunded, we crowdsourced now. I think they're about halfway there, I think.
Only happens once every sixteen years.
Well, what if I was eleven in a row back in the mornings?
We did. All right, Mr. Warren Nevad is here with us today to talk about some possible charter revisions. Everybody has had an opportunity, we have sent these out a couple of times, to take a look at the charter. And Mr. Warren's here to answer any questions, if any. And we have had some conversations in the past about taking a look at charter change as far as going to the possible city manager, former government versus what we have had now. And right there on C seventeen, you'll see there what you've got. But I'm not gonna go over this page and page and page. I've had an opportunity to look at this and you can stop me at any point or add to or take away. One of the things, I want to get back to that, but one of the things I think that I would certainly like to see done, changed here is where if they see eighteen, all of them shall receive no compensation for their services. Did you give Andre a copy? Okay. For their services, that's one change, I think, that certainly needs to be done. And again, folks, jump in here, if you've got things marked and you want to discuss them, we can. There any discussion on that? I think we all agree that that's deserving, I hope.
Yes, I hope it's retroactive.
Yeah, we'll see on that. That Mr. Grapp can tell you that, I don't know if it's retroactive or not.
About compensation for elected people?
Right.
That would only apply to the next term of office.
Okay.
Yeah.
You mean if we change this charter right here, we won't get paid?
No, we just said next term of office, but state constitution doesn't allow elected officials to increase their compensation or their terms.
So they would, it would go in effect September one, twenty twenty four? That's, that's when, that's when it would go in effect. Would have to change the charter and then according to what Warren, Mr. Nevad said, that's when it would go in effect. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Something that.
I do. That's a bunch of crap. I mean, we get our butts eaten up one side and down to the other. I've been on the board here since oh four or oh six or something. And I mean, that's a bunch of crap. And I ain't saying I have to have the money, but that shit wrong.
Maybe one option is for the city to look at maybe reimbursement policy in your business. If you travel or something, you would get per mileage or meals or something like that.
Yeah, I think we already, I think we already have that, anybody's new to it anymore. David, I'm with you, I'm agree. On C twenty seven, and again, I'm just, some things that I've marked up here is under municipal elections, when they talk about Wednesday, I, what do you, Wednesday is just a, it was set up for Wednesdays years and years ago and I thought, change that to Tuesdays. Keep it in June, but the first day of that person to take office will be July one. And they wouldn't have to wait from June to September one, which is an extremely long time. Couple, couple reasons that we would still be independent. We wouldn't be crowded in with county offices. We're all independents when it comes to running and you don't have to fall in danger of being classified as one of the parties. But that, that's just an idea that just, you'd have the election be the first Tuesday in June and the winners would take office on July one.
Well, that, that would allow them, that those new elected people to have some say in the budget cycle too, right?
Well, the bud, no, the budget would be complete. Yeah, the new budget takes effect July one.
I always thought that was kind of, yeah, the outgoing person in our last election was still having all the same.
Well, if you remember the.
You could adopt a continuing budget resolution if you want to give the board time to adopt the budget for the, at that time of the current fiscal year. You probably, you've ever adopted a continuing budget resolution?
No, we, I think we have before. But of course, we tried to get ours passed in second reading.
Right.
All that before July one, so we've not had, we have the right to do that, but we have. Any discussion on that?
I'll just restate that, that I think the incoming, the new elected person is just coming in on board right on that budget has basically passed on something that they haven't done, say. And they're gonna be serving that first year in office and have zero input on the budget. It may take a whole bunch of changes to ever make it for that, for that, those new elected people would have to say.
Right, so.
But the way it stands now is you're not gonna have any say until September.
Well, yeah, it's worse now. But they still don't have any say, that it just gets passed the day before they take office, basically. But the only way you can then is if you move the election to May and they came in first Tuesday. Because then they would have to catch up and.
I'm okay with that. The big thing for me was the, was the Wednesdays elections and then not taking office for basically nine days after you're elected, that's just a little long. Again, this is a work session, we're not looking at anything, just discussion. If that's, I mean, if you want, you know.
Yeah, we'll have to have a legal review on that because somebody can make the argument, if you will, that you're shortening my term by two months. You know, I was elected and my term is supposed to be until September. Now you're shorting it to July, so I gotta check the lawyers on that.
Andre is here, he's our city attorney. Andre, do you have an opinion on that?
I don't think an elected office is of property interest and I don't think that it would be a deprivation under due process to shorten somebody's term, especially if you do it by legislative action. But that doesn't mean that somebody wouldn't be upset about it and that's probably a thing. That's the practical.
Okay, thank you.
You been in touch with our attorney, Melissa or Stephanie?
I haven't yet, I haven't answered.
Can you follow up on that?
Sure. Where the, where the full management?
Check, we'll check with Stephanie Allen O'Hara. She's the legal consultant in my territory. Melissa helps out sometimes, so, but yeah, Stephanie would be the point of contact. Yeah, we'd like to, of course, like the city attorneys to contact our legal consultant.
Absolutely. Yeah, I would be like Rex said, I'd be a member of the election, may take office in June. Too, the Jordan's more than y'all were talking about, but yeah. Just something they've got an input on that.
Well, usually, so the, excuse me, Adrian, the county primaries sometimes are in May.
I don't know, maybe. But yeah, that's what I don't, I don't know if there's any other on election in May.
Well, there, I mean, I know the primaries usually, is that, is that right?
I guess that's correct.
It's kind of unusual you have one Wednesday, most.
It is.
Tuesday or Thursday, I've never heard of election on Wednesday.
So one of the, one of the good things is when you pass the ordinance, there is public hearings on the second reading, because we have to have a second reading on the budget. So that any, of course, I understand what you're saying, that they don't have a truce seat at the table when it comes to sitting in the budget, but I mean, have a guest or as a visitor, they can certainly sit in on it and voice their opinion for what that's worth. I miss weighing it all out, you know.
Did they ever mention about the children for that?
Right, I mean, I think. Is that something that we were thumbs up on or in May or June or?
I'd certainly go with changing Tuesday instead of Wednesday and then the Monday thing, whatever it is. Whatever it may look like, I'll have it by May.
Well, June is the odd, and at least that keeps it to.
Well, one option is to have the election the same days in the county that you could probably save on expenses there than instead of having your own separate election.
Well, we've been independent and a lot of times if you're not careful, you get, we're classified with the two parties. At least in the city election, it's independent and you're not, you're not thrown in there with them. That, I was just trying to avoid that. Thank you, you're right.
I don't know, you're looking for an answer, but I don't have one. I'm good with Tuesday, I'm good with the June starting in July, that's what it needs to be.
All right, well, we.
That makes more sense.
I think the main question is the start date will infringe upon the length of the term.
Can you report back on that, Andre?
Yes, I will.
Hey, bring my card in case you have a problem.
Yeah, I want to make sure that the, even though it's not going to be to twenty four on the agenda for November for charter chains, all of them shall receive compensation for their services. And that's being, November, June.
Extracting the word no.
Yeah, Andre, I, we've just taken a look, have you got a copy of this?
Yes.
Did you just strap the word no, I guess, I don't know. Some claim C eighteen.
The sentence that reads, all of them shall receive no compensation for their services as such. We'll take your advice, but it looks like the word no can just be.
Better just take out the whole sentence?
Yeah.
Warren, just, I think you've done this before and I apologize if you keep asking, but I, can you tell us, talk to us just a little bit about the difference in a city manager type format versus kind of what we have? Can you explain that?
Currently, your charter has what we call a strong mayor, former governor, the mayor has a day-to-day administrative and executive responsibilities. And it's very common across the state, many cities have a strong mayor where the mayor works full-time. There's the general law charters that a mayor automatic has that. Other cities nearby that has a similar form as Livingston would be like Monterey and Jamestown where there are strong mayors. As far as the city manager form, you can go about it a couple of ways. One is you could have language that says you shall have one. In that case, you would put the job responsibilities in the charter or you could reference that you'll adopt an ordinance with those, with those job responsibilities. You could have language that says you may have a city manager administrator if the board desires. That's kind of the approach I would recommend because it give you flexibility. There's a big difference between the words shall and may, so that's one option. Another option you could have is you keep the form, but you adopt an ordinance creating like a city administrator's position that would report to the mayor and the board, but the mayor would still have the same authority. So it would kind of be like an assistant to the mayor, if you will. But if you want to have the city manager form, I would recommend that you have, it's strong enough language because you want to attract the best talent that you can. If someone's interested in being a city manager here, they want to make sure that their position's pretty, pretty solid and secure that they just can't on one whim just wipe out the position. So there's a lot of factors.
Are there any advantages to having a manager versus a mayor or?
The managers, looking at the advantages for mayors, you would select that person based on experience and qualifications and management. If you elect a mayor, there's always the risk of electing somebody who's never had any management experience or financial experience.
Does manager work for the board, is he hired by the board or is he hired by the mayor?
It would be by the board, but there are some cases when you have like a city administrator could be hired by the mayor, but that's very rare. In your case, it would be hired by the board, the city manager. The city manager would have hiring and firing authority, but the city manager would report to the board.
And what are some cities that operate under the city manager?
Well, you have Cookeville, they have a city manager form where the manager reports to the board. You have Harriman, we changed their form of government several years back where they were a strong mayor and now they're a manager commission form. And the state has some general law charters that are manager commission, that's like Spring City. More and more in Tennessee, as cities are becoming more and more progressive, are seeing more initiatives on bringing city managers to the community. Because you want a, a city manager is, you know, supposed to be a non-political position. You work for the board, you're not, you know, it's completely different than when you have an elected official who's running the day-to-day operations.
And Cookeville has a city manager and a mayor. So where is the mayor's position coming in? I guess he's part of the board and.
With the Cookeville? Right, right. In Cookeville, the, the mayor is appointed by the board, this happens in several other cities, traditionally that maybe who was the highest vote getter, the board would vote on the mayor, so.
They don't hold office, I mean, they hold office, but they don't really have an office, it's a non, it's a non
It's a weak mayor, it's really, um, of course, the, the perception of a, of a typical citizen is the mayor is the top authority of the city. And in the mayor, in every city, the mayor's major responsibility would be the presiding officer at a meeting, they control the, and the ceremonial head, and then the sign checks and, and things like that. So, but you're fortunate in fact that you're a private act charter, so you can customize your charter the way you see fit, you're not locked in anyway.
And we have the best charter to do this to
Oh, definitely, private act.
Private acts.
Yeah, to change the language of here, you would adopt the resolution like in January, send it to the general assembly. They'd send, they would approve it, hopefully, when likely, then it comes back to you, you have to vote by two-thirds on your retired board to approve it.
So if I understood you correctly, if we went through the process you was talking about, about doing that and sending it to the general assembly, if we chose to do that but used the word may in there, then we're still not completely locked in either way?
Right.
There will be room there to decide it, you would
Yeah. Yeah, you can still put, you put may, and then the event that the city has the city manager, this, this is the authority and, you know, it would, the mayor would have the other authority, ceremonial head, presiding officer. Interestingly enough, the general law mayor automatic charter, like Jasper and Huntsville, it gives a mayor authority on day-to-day stuff, but there's a provision in that charter that says unless designated by your ordinance, so the city in that type of charter can adopt an ordinance and give you somebody else the authority.
Now you're confusing.
There's all types of charters, and like I said, you have the best charter, so.
Andre?
Andre?
Yes?
Does Carthage or Allgood have a city manager?
Allgood has a city manager, Carthage does not.
How does, well, I was gonna ask about, about turning this, but we'll get there in a second. Thank you.
Yeah, Allgood has a city administrator, not a city manager, administrator, but, yeah.
But just a different title for
Well, sometimes a city administrator doesn't have hiring or firing authority, then they make the recommendation to the board to terminate. Typically, the city manager has the hiring and firing authority.
That was your alternative recommendation?
Right.
So the city manager is an administrator, unfortunately.
I've got a question, what's brought all this up about manager also?
Well, I, I think at several conferences, it's been encouraged, uh, for resident cities, uh, at least just take a look at the charter and view it and see if there's something that the city might want to do, may not want to do. I, I, you know, I, I don't know, I, I know it's a big decision, does not make me, may, can't be made tonight, whether we want it to or not, but some of that needs to have some some careful thought and consideration and that's my opinion, I think that's, that's kind of wrong there.
And my recommendation is, you know, it's, it's very good if you agree unanimously on the changes because you're, you're gonna be presenting that to the legislator, your state senator, your state rep, and they want to know, oh, you bring this, sponsor this legislation, I'll make sure that all the, you know, the strong support not, is come in on a majority vote on a resolution.
I think it's, it, it, don't have to be two-thirds.
Yeah, coming back, yeah, to rat, to ratify, entire, and the entire board, so how many folks can vote, six?
Yeah.
So that would be four.
So that's, I mean, like I said, we can't take any action tonight, but something to talk to constituents about possibility and, and just go from there. I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't
You mentioned term limits.
Yeah, so I did, somebody asked me about term limits, um, as far as City Livingston goes, we have, or have we had enough participation to recommend two term limits for elected officials? I, I'm not, I don't know.
Have you asked anybody?
Yeah, anybody, I mean, historically, I've, I've not noticed that, but
I, I can't, I, I mean, I don't, all I can go by is what the last elections has been. The last one was unopposed, my position, mayor's position was unopposed, board volume position.
Well, it's like to me, everyone has an election, but they set your term limit.
Oh, that, that is, that is
They keep you or put you on our what?
Yeah. I'm just trying to answer your question, maybe we wanted to answer it better.
My position on term limits, I think they're more effective in larger communities, where you have a larger group of citizens that potentially would like to run and serve. But, you know, it, it takes a lot to run for office these days, you know, you're opening yourself to the whole world, and a lot of people who otherwise could be qualified aren't interested in running for office. So it happens in smaller towns, it's, it becomes more and more of a challenge to get any, you know, good people to run, run for office.
Did I mention? All right, anybody have anything else for Mr. Nevada?
Is there possible sample language from these changes for, to the city manager, city administrator, whatever type thing that they could take a look at and maybe review?
Yeah, I think that Warren could, MTS might be able to provide that, or Tennessee Managers Association, I don't know who the president is of that, but I know they've got one that might be able to come up and shed some light too, along with Warren.
Yeah, what we would do, we would take probably charter language from cities that have city managers, like Cookeville, and put in the responsibilities in, in the charter. And then, like we said, if you want, you, you shall or may.
We look into that though, can try to bring something back, something you can do.
I think you would have clarified in my
Yes, you look at it, yes. Uh, any other discussion on the, those two topics? Okay, hearing none, I want to thank Mr. John Grubbs for coming up again, thank you very, very much, I know you probably have already emailed that to me.
I am.
Thank you again for coming up and spending some time with us, Warren's always a pleasure.
See you Fri- Friday.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, all right, thank you very, very much, and any motion?
Subjection.
Motion made by Paul Liddell, see